...this meeting to order, will a clerk please follow along?
Hey, Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Snyder.
Here.
Councilmember Gloria.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Okay, our only order of business tonight is to receive the certification of the election results from the Board of Elections or from the judge, who are we receiving it from?
Both of those.
Okay, the Board of Elections and the election judges. So if the Chair of the Board of Elections and the Chief Judge would like to give us that report.
Good evening, I am Sergeant Chair of the Board of Elections and also Chief Judge, and I want to report on the results of the city election on November 3rd, 2009. I first want to start by saying this is the first time that we use the Scan Integrity Voting System, which is an optical scan system that uses paper ballots and then has heavy-duty encryption at the back end, and that's just, and I can't begin to explain that part. The system allows voters to record a code that's revealed on their ballot when they vote, and they can write that down on a piece of paper again with their ballot confirmation number and go home and check online to see if their ballot was counted as cast. This has never been used in a municipality before, it's only been used in a couple of university elections, so this was really groundbreaking, and I just wanted to let everybody know about that. And on top of that, it worked, which is the best part. So, yeah, so the total votes cast was 1,733, and I'll just run through the races now. For Mayor, there were 1,000 votes for Bruce Williams, 664 for Roger Schlegel, and 17 write-ins. For Ward 1, there were, so that was the total for the mayoral race, now these numbers will include the numbers by ward. So for mayoral candidates, it was 146 votes for Roger Schlegel, 314 for Bruce Williams, 6 write-ins. For Councilmember Josh Wright, he received 434 votes, and there were 13 write-ins. Here's Ward 2, for Mayor, Roger Schlegel received 129 votes, Bruce Williams received 140, and there were 6 write-ins. For City Council, Colleen Clay received 236 votes, and there were 15 write-ins. For Ward 3, Roger Schlegel received 205 votes, Bruce Williams received 272, and there were 3 write-ins. Dan Robinson for City Council received 397 votes, and there were 34 write-ins. For Ward 4, for Mayor, Roger Schlegel received 87 votes, Bruce Williams received 96 votes, and there was 1 write-in. For City Council, Terry Siemens received 196 votes. Eric Mendoza, who was preregistered as a write-in, received 12 votes, and there were 2 other write-ins. So last night, when I said there were 14 write-ins, the computer was only able to read that there were write-ins and not break them out by who it was at the time, and we did that with our eyes today. For Ward 5, Roger Schlegel received, for Mayor, Roger Schlegel received 26 votes, Bruce Williams received 57 votes, and there were no write-ins for Mayor. For City Council, Ruben Sniper received 71 votes, there were 10 write-ins. And in Ward 6, for Mayor, Roger Schlegel received 71 votes, Bruce Williams received 121 votes, there was 1 write-in. For City Council, Naveed Nasser received 61 votes, Fred Schultz received 138 votes, and no write-ins. So the total number of, oh, that's just registered voters. The last page of your packet lists the number of registered voters by citizens and non-citizens for each ward. And I also want to say that we had a really great election judge team this year, and I'm grateful to everybody who participated. We had some, a couple of real stars, and nobody fell down on the job at all, so that really helps things go smoothly. Yes?
Are you?
Well, I just, sorry, Mr. Sniper raised his hand, so I said yes.
Go ahead.
I don't have a table, that's a total table.
On the last page? I'd be happy to give you my page.
That's the number of registered voters.
But there's not a total table.
You don't have that, that, it just, there's a little math that needs to be done, and that last sheet didn't make it in the package, but you will have it.
Well, let me just spend a few seconds telling you what's on it. There are about 11,000 registered voters in the city of Tacoma Park, and 1,733 people voted in the election, that's probably the important information for tonight. It's broken up by ward as well that you might not need to know. It ranges from about 1,200 voters to about 23, 2,400 voters per ward, and that's probably going to change with our new census data that'll be coming in next year.
And you said there were 1,000 votes for Bruce Williams for Mayor's total?
Yes.
And 664 for Roger?
Yes.
And then 17 write-ins?
Yes, for the mayoral race, yes.
I have a question too. I'm curious about the discrepancy between those wards with few registered voters and those wards with many registered voters, although the total number of residents is roughly the same, as I understand it, there are about 3,000 residents per ward. So in some wards, there are far more registered voters than in other wards. And when you say that the census will change that...
It could change it.
Could change it, would it change the, how would the census change the number of registered voters, since that's a number that we get frequently based on more frequent counts?
It could change the ward in which a voter lives, possibly, depending on how demographics change in the city.
Could change the ward in which?
It could change the shape of the ward, or the wards might need to be adjusted to have, Jesse can explain that much better than I can, though.
After, you're speaking of redistricting now.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
That's a possibility after the census.
Sure, I didn't realize that that's what you meant, but now I understand, thank you.
It looked like maybe Jesse had additional explanation there, now I was just going to clarify exactly what, but when the wards, when you redistrict the wards after, after the census.
Councilmember Seaman, question.
Well, I guess I do have questions, but I also want to start out by just thanking you for the work, both of the Election Board and of the judges. I think this year's election was the smoothest run and...
I'm so happy to hear you say that.
Least problematic from our perspective. Now, you know, we don't see inside the black box of all the problems you did face and the different challenges you had, but it really was, I think, from the residents' point of view and from our point of view, from my point of view, very smooth, and very few problems, if any.
It's really nice to hear that, thank you.
The feedback that I heard standing outside the building here all day was when people, I wasn't soliciting responses, people were just volunteering how they really liked the new election, the Scan Integrity System. They, I didn't hear anybody voice concerns with the way it worked or any problems with it, so I think, and again, appreciate the help that you gave and the Election Board gave with selecting that system, it seems to be very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
And of course, the many hours that you all put in are greatly appreciated.
I don't count those hours anymore.
I had one question, I thank you for the report. I looked at the website today, at the numbers on the website, and it was pretty, they had pie charts, I knew that Councilmember Sniper would, said he didn't like the three-dimensional pie charts, but I was a little confused by some of the numbers on there, there were things called dead ballots, and I'm not sure if that was the right term.
I can address that question.
Great, I just, yeah.
Yeah.
What are they?
There was a bit of a misunderstanding in the way that those results are reported. They were as if, as if there was a runoff, and so it, you'll see some of them say round 1 or round 2, as if there was a round 2, when in fact, there is no round 2 and there were no discarded ballots based on that. So that's, that's an error, and that's going to, I sent an email last night, that's an error. I also mentioned the three-dimensional pie charts and suggested that you shouldn't use...
I thought they were very attractive myself.
But, but that's an error, and that, this, the information here wants, and I have to say, this report is, as you can see, it's a little bit incomplete, I was really racing to get something on paper, so you would at least, I know what everyone wanted to know.
Right.
And we wanted to get that in front of you.
No apology necessary, I know it was a very, very busy, not only day yesterday, but you've had a busy number of days building up to this election, I appreciate your time also. And I would just say, as far as the reporting on the website goes, it would be helpful, regardless of what's on there, if there was a little bit of a description of what it is.
Yes.
And that would be something the Scan Integrity could look into.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm curious, now I'm curious about the dead ballots, I hadn't, and I'm wondering if that reflects the number of second choices that were marked?
Right, it has to do with first and second choices, exactly.
And that, and that has to do with the instant, the potential for instant runoff?
That's right.
Because if I understand that you'd mark a second choice, in the event that there's 3 candidates and then a runoff would be called for. Of course, in this election, there were no 3-party races, so that's a question, I noted that yesterday. Since there were no 3-party, or 3 candidate races, did it make sense to have the, or was the idea to get people used to having a second or a third choice, or?
Well, there's always the possibility that somebody might want to write in, and then that would make it a third candidate in at least some of the races.
Sure, okay, that's true.
And part of it also is to get people used to the idea of, that we do have choices here, and that you can make a, you can indicate your first choice. Some people, we had a couple ballots with no votes on them at all, and I guess that's a form of protest, but we saw them, and they were duly not counted.
Well, I did say before, and I want to echo Terry's appreciation of all your hard work, and I heard a lot of, a lot of support for the Scan Integrity System, kind of, something that was, it was kind of neat to have the pen, and you made the thing, then I heard some confusion about where were you supposed to write the, you know, and why did the pen have 2 ends, and a few other things like that, but I'm sure you'll work out the explanation of that, and I, I was, it was clear that this was a first, well, it wasn't clear it was a first run, but it was clear that you were learning from this run, and that the Scan Integrity folks were learning.
Yes, we did make a lot of improvements since the mock election in April, and there were some, a couple of very cumbersome features in that mock election, and I'm really happy we had it, because those, the really cumbersome stuff is all gone now, and it was a great idea to have a mock election. It wasn't my idea, but it was a great idea.
Well, I, again, I was going to, I just want to echo Terry's appreciation.
Thanks.
And I'll echo the appreciation as well. I've just got one question in terms of what we're going to get, that's going to be the final version, since this isn't the final version. Will it be possible to see, will it include total numbers, you know, we've got the votes cast, but we don't have a sense of the votes not cast?
Yeah, you have to subtract, that's what I'm doing here.
Right, but I didn't know if that was going to be part of it, or if we had to do that manually to see, because there were, would you say there were 1,733 total ballots cast, but then in any, like in the, when you count up the Mayor's race?
1681.
It's less than that, and therefore, there were a number of votes, and the sense of what that includes, whether it was just, there was no mark on the ballot at all, they voted for Ward race but not the Mayor's race, I just didn't know how to interpret that.
As of this afternoon, we have much of that data, I think we probably have everything you just mentioned. We went through this afternoon, and we won't have to do this again, I hope, we did a hand count with the help of the Scan Integrity, some of the Scan Integrity team members, to make, just to validate that the system actually worked. It does work, I'm so happy. And what, one thing we do have is the number of ballots cast per ward, and we have how many votes each candidate got for each race, how many votes each candidate got, how many votes were for a write-in of any name, and then how many were, we have one lumped category for blank, spoiled, or void for some other reason.
Okay.
Or, yeah, those are the 3 categories. So that information exists, it's not typed up anyplace, it's on a piece of paper in my scratchy handwriting, but it does exist. And that would be something that we would want to use in the ballot accounting process as well, because there, the numbers, the number will not add up to the number of people who checked in, because things happen, because people, it's called, the technical term is a fleeing voter, people get impatient with the line and they go home, or everyone's, well, things like that happen every once in a while.
And will it, will it, were there, will it have a count of the number of cases where what, somebody goofed and said, oops, and I've got to, you know, I've latched this up and I've got to start over?
We have a list of, we have a count of spoiled ballots, where somebody made a mistake and they traded it in for a fresh one, and we've got an envelope with all of them in there, and we have a count.
And, and the spoiled ballot counts as a ballot cast or not as a ballot cast?
It counts not as a ballot cast.
Okay.
I think some of those numbers would be helpful, just as we, you know, consider the Scan Integrity System, I think it'd be good for the council to get to see those numbers, and in the future, not just...
We can give you that.
Yeah, just to get a sense of the system, and you have...
An absentee ballot is issued and not returned, it counts as a vote cast, so it's almost like a blank ballot. So it's recorded in the poll book as if they voted, because we don't want them to vote twice.
Right.
So it's recorded as voting, so that's, accounts for some of that discrepancy as well. Most were returned, but there were some not, and I'll also provide a number with the, as I said, we really wanted to get you this much on paper, but the early voting, a number, some of the absentees are early voting, what we called early voting, and some of them are straight absentees, so I'll have that break down as well.
That would be helpful. And were there any problems with any of the provisional ballots where there was a problem that has to be addressed, or were there those individual...
We had, I think, just a second, I have to go. I have a constituent meeting in Long Branch, Schlegel, so get started off in my new term, so, thank you, thank you.
Good night.
Congratulations.
I'll enjoy my chapter coming meeting very much, I always do. So to return to the question of provisional ballots, we did have some provisional ballots, I think the number was 26, and of those, we resolved all of them by the end of the day today, 9 of them, sorry, 11 of them were valid votes, and then we counted them this afternoon, and the remainder were not valid votes, and Jesse was able, Jesse did the research on that, and she was able to confirm with the, confer and confirm with the Board of Elections that those would not be valid votes. Maybe they, for instance, live in Prince George's but think they live in Tacoma Park, or they live in Silver Spring but they think they live in Tacoma Park, that sort of thing. Or they're not registered to vote, not everybody realizes that you need to register to vote, and there's always a little bit of that in every election.
And was there also a question of a ward boundary being different?
There were some questions about that, and when people said, wait a minute, I came here to vote for Terry Siemens, it turns out, in almost all the cases, that's what it was, we, we can fix that, we would take, that we would have the person spoil the ballot, which means filling in all the obsoles so it couldn't possibly be voted by anybody else, and then we would just issue them the correct ballot for the ward. And that accounts for some of the spoiled ballots, for sure.
Okay.
And I, I know Jesse, there was a question about a couple of the addresses on Lee Avenue, whether the voter registration roll actually had them identified as the correct wards, and you were going to check into that later.
Right, and the one, unfortunately, there was the one, there was one voter in particular who didn't, instead of kind of sticking around to help resolve it, she ended up voting her ballot, just wanted to cast it and leave, which was problematic, because if she had stuck around, we could have dealt with it in a different way.
Right, but voters, I mean, have their own time schedules.
Absolutely, yeah.
But the, the core question is whether we're resolving that.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Good, that's why we're right.
I also, just to thank you, I want to thank Jesse, because I know that she put in a lot of time and effort into the election as well, not just on the day of the election, but in the weeks beforehand, so I appreciate that. I had just a couple of quick questions. One, I want to know if we're going to list all the write-ins on the website, I feel it's actually important for, to give people a sense of integrity, voter integrity, that we list all the votes listed to any person, whether they're a write-in or a ballot candidate. I'm just curious if we can do that.
We can do that, I actually recommend against it, but you can do it, we can do it, we have done it in the past, but what you'll see is some, you know, the obvious, the historical characters, the fictional characters, the anybody-but comments, the, what's the other one that's?
New York, got to make an email.
Yeah, but there's another, there's another comment, yeah, the none of the above, and...
Oh, no confidence scott or write in, I've got to call...
We can do that, but, but what that means, okay, so that, if someone does that and they want to see that their write-in, you know, actually shows up there, I don't know that there's a value in that, in letting people do that, but if you see a value in it, we can.
I guess I feel like we at least need to make it, if someone were to call and ask the question?
Yeah.
Or ask for the information, I think we need to make that available to the public, maybe we don't need to post it, but I do think it needs to be something that could be made available.
Right, it's, it's public, I mean, yes, it certainly is, and it's a, it's a policy question as to whether, to post the list, but we can, we can post it.
I guess I don't care about posting it, as long as somebody should find out what the list is if they wanted it, it's a public document.
Yeah, I think that's a good approach.
And I would like to give a list of this, but I would support not putting it on the website, I don't see value in putting it on the website.
Right, these would be cases where it was a first choice.
Yeah.
So not, it wouldn't be, right, if it was, if they, right, chose first and second, and then as a third choice wrote in someone, it wouldn't get that.
Just first choices.
Right.
The second thing I had, question I had was, does the system in any way track how long it, I guess it can, how long it takes someone to vote, from like when they check in to when they have to vote, do we have any idea about that?
The system itself can't do that, but we did have observers from the Scan Integrity Team sitting, we had a designated observer area, you might have noticed a little table off to the side, where there were people, for certain times of the day, they would sit and they'd use a stopwatch to time people from the time they, actually, I believe it was from the time they went into the voting booth to the time they got up and walked to the scanner. I'm not 100% sure what that time was, but there were observers timing voters for part of the day.
Okay, yeah, I'm not interested in how long it took someone to write the, to go through the process themselves, like once they go into the board, I'm interested in how long one would have to wait from when you checked in to when you were finished voting, basically.
Oh, well, that's very dependent on the time of day, and, which brings me to another thing I wanted to bring up, thanks. We, Jesse actually arranged for the city bus to go around and pick up voters at various parts of town, so the bus went to Victory Tower and Franklin Apartments and the Rec Center on New Hampshire, and was it Roanoke and Flower?
Houston.
Houston.
Yes.
And made the route, the arrangement was for it to make the circuit 3 times, and it did bring voters, the first time it came, it was like, okay, all hands on deck, because there was a press of people who came all at once. The other thing that really, and so I think that may have helped turn out some, the other thing that I know helped turn out some, because people told me that it reminded them to vote or they thought it was too late because they forgot how to change the clock on their Honda to accommodate going back to regular time, WAMU came, and the reporter Matt Bush came and interviewed, he interviewed me, he interviewed Barry Hoffman, the Vice Chair, and also David Shum, and perhaps other people, I don't know, I haven't heard this broadcast yet, but it was on WAMU yesterday evening, and there were a lot of people straight through dinnertime and to the end, I think the last voter voted at about 8:20, and it, I know it got some people here, so that was welcome attention.
So I was interested in that more, because I think if it does get too long to wait, it creates an issue with people staying and voting. I only heard one person complain to me on the way out, that it took, that they were going to have to wait an hour, that they were leaving, and then I, that raised a flag for me, so I immediately went in, covered up my, any stickers or anything, and just asked someone coming out of the door, like, how long did you wait, and I was hearing more like 15 or 20 minutes.
The longest I heard was 20 minutes, and I, you know, I wasn't at the end of the line all day, because I was busy, but I, I never heard of anybody's, no one, I never heard anybody, any real report, like from an election judge or from the individual saying that it took longer than 20 minutes.
So I just want that more, as noted for the record, because, you know, one of the person, thing the person said was, this is ridiculous, I pay all these tax dollars and I have to wait an hour, and I just didn't think it was valid, and I don't know whose constituent it is, but when they complain to you, you can...
I think Councilmember Siemens can provide some testimony on that.
Right, my wife and I came and voted, and the line was allegedly at its longest, which was all the way around the lobby and back down the hall and...
To the back door of the voting room.
Clear back to the back door of the voting room, and it took us 17 minutes.
That's as long as the line got, I am certain of that.
Right.
So, okay, we have a data point, thank you.
Thank you. And I was incredibly impressed with that, to have that many people in front of you.
Sorry. Was the, was the scanning 100% accurate to the hand count, was there any discrepancies at all, was there any, anything that didn't get read or that the scanner made a mistake on?
Well, there, on the verification form that you can tap, write your confirmation number and then the codes from your ballot?
Yeah.
One person did scan one of those, it didn't count as a vote, though. As far as I know, it's accurate, I can't answer that question completely, because we had, at the end of the day, at the end of the evening last night, we had voters for specific candidates or for write-ins, and then there were adjustments that we made, because that's why we're election judges, we judged specific ballots, should be counted one way or another, and there were, there were cases where people voted for 2 people as their first choice, for instance, and the machine would record that as an invalid ballot, but if their first choice was Josh Wright, and their second choice was their write-in for Josh Wright?
Right.
That would, the machine would register it as an invalid ballot, but our human eyes would be, it would be clear to us that the voter's intent was to vote for Josh Wright, and that's how that would be resolved.
Okay.
So I don't know if they're exactly the same, and that is an example of a reason they might not be exactly the same.
That part was me writing, you know, check obviously. I really wanted to make sure, I really wanted to make sure. The last question is, can we, will we be able to get a list of voters by wards?
A list of people who voted?
Yeah.
It should be possible to pull either off the poll books.
Yeah, names, lists of names, I think that's incorporated into the, I don't typically get that from the Board of Elections, we, it's in the voter history, so, and as you know, this year, we learned something new about how voter history is being treated, but we'll have voter history, the list with voter history on it, could they pull, would they provide me just a straight list?
I'm just wondering when we can get, I'd like to send a thank you note to people, so...
Yeah. Let me look into that, I'll ask about that.
And then my last comment is just that, the one thing I did hear was the confusion around being able to write down the codes, and I myself was, got confused by that, only because I figured, well, I don't really need to read the directions, I'll just do the ballot. to read the directions, I'll just do the ballot. And then I did the ballot and went to scan it in. And as I was scanning in, I said, "Oh, and how do I check my code?" And she was like, you know, and I don't quite know how you get around that issue, whether there's something you hand people while they're waiting in line, or maybe you did that. I didn't, when I came in, I didn't wait in line. But I think a fair number of people afterwards, when they were going to take this integrity survey, they said, "Oh, I can, I could do what? How did that work?" And then it was sort of too late. So that's the only piece of additional feedback.
That one, we have discovered, is a big balance because we can tell people, we learned at the mock election to not even mention this when people check in, but when people get their ballot, a judge, the ballot judge can explain that we have a new system and you can use the pen in the voting booth to mark your ballot and there'll be a code and you can write it down and check it online. The trade-off is the more time the ballot judge spends on instructions.
The more.
The longer it takes people to get a ballot.
And the more confused people get.
Because it's a lot of information at one time. We have the instructions posted prominently in the booths.
Yes.
But I didn't look up when I voted, I just thought I had, and I was, I was in and out of there. But I know how the system works. But there are a couple of different, there's instructions, there were write-in, registered write-in instructions in Ward Four, and then there's how to mark your ballot and then if you want to confirm it. It's a lot of words in there. And they're just, it's a trade-off between how much time you spend on instructions and how long it takes a person to get their ballot. And I observed over the course of the day, when the judges, the ballot judges were taking more time to explain how you can check your vote, I saw more people walking out with that slip.
Yeah.
But it was taking them longer to vote. So it's, it's really hard to figure out.
Maybe it's something, I don't know, do we talk about it in the newsletter leading up? We did.
We did, but it's a challenge and.
It's just so different from all the other times people vote, right? So they're not used to it.
Right. It, yeah, it's definitely new and we could definitely do more education in advance, but it's a balance.
Cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Stever.
Yes, thank you for doing this and providing all this additional information. It was very helpful. A couple of observations after what Councilmember Wright said. I had a question from a constituent. Could someone substitute, when they went into the polling booth at 7:00 AM, could they substitute a different pen? And that would then fool the machine all day.
Substitute a different pen?
Pick up, pick up the pen that was provided that marked ballot and give something else and everybody who goes into that.
After that.
Usually that one has an invalid ballot because it doesn't read it.
Ah, okay. Well, I can tell you that if you just, if you don't use the pen there and you just pull out the pen out of your jacket pocket and use that, the machine will read the ballot perfectly fine. You won't be able to check online because the code won't be visible to you, but the machine will read it just fine. The machine might even read it if you, the machine will read it if you rub so hard that you obscure the number. So if the machine sees a dark, if the scanner sees a dark mark there, it will read the ballot properly. In terms of switching out a pen to fool the computer, I don't know how that could happen. I guess it's possible, but I would have to ask the Scan Integrity folks to see if that's actually true. The way the ovals work are they're printed with two kinds of ink. One is, they're the same color, but one is a reactive ink and one's a non-reactive ink. So when you, you probably gave it a try. When you mark the ballot, it is gray, dark gray and yellow. And since the scanner, it's an optical scanner, it's just looking for light and dark. I don't really know how it could be fooled, but this is not my field. I'm an ecologist, so I can ask the Scan Integrity folks. I'd be happy to do that, but I.
I think that if it didn't, what I had thought was that if it didn't show up dark, then the person marking the ballot later during the day would, it's not, you know, it's nothing showing up. Because the only way to fool the scanner is for it not to show up dark. I mean, if you, if whatever they, whatever pen they substitute, if it still makes it show up dark, then the scanner reads it. So it has to be a pen.
That does nothing.
That does nothing. You know, that has water in it, I'm, water, or that has, you know, something non-reactive. And you would think that the voter would see, well, wait a minute, nothing's, you know, I've rubbed it, but nothing's changed, and think they would notice. So that's what I said about it, but please ask them about this.
Okay, I'll do that. It's certainly a question that, no one ever asked me that over the course of the day, but as you can see, thousands of people came through and there was just one of me, so.
The other is.
Excuse me, folks. Sash, to Code Two on the PTA agenda at 8:30.
The, we are losing things. We did talk to one person, two people, who didn't want to wait. One person who had actually come twice, started to wait in line, said it was too long and then left. I think like Councilmember Wright, that we should think about how to make sure this moves along quickly. 17 minutes may have been, you know, too long for some people. We don't want people discouraged.
Well, we have some options for people, and we have, we have absentee voting and.
I know, and I think this is what we might think about next time.
And then we also have early voting. So a person could have written in ahead of time or called, have filled out the absentee ballot application ahead of time and had it mailed, and then mailed it, filled it out at their leisure and nailed it back in. Or they could have come by and Jessie had a voting table set up, up near the atrium room upstairs where people could vote early. So maybe that person wasn't aware of the options, I'm not sure there.
The other is that the Montgomery County registration thing is fairly slow. I've heard people talking about that, that it takes, they felt it took a long time.
It's possible, it does. I don't really know about that. What I do know is that you, that updating your voter registration when you renew your driver's license doesn't work very well. I have seen that happen. I'm also an election judge at 1306, at which Piney Branch Elementary School for the regular elections, and it doesn't work that well.
The other comment, I have a few more, in about the list of voters. Last time, I think it was last time, I waited like several months. I don't know how fast Montgomery County turns that database around, but you can request the database again.
Yeah, the only challenge is when I got the database before the election cycle, Montgomery County would no longer break out the municipal election for you. Jessie had to cut it out.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, they're just not providing that to, it was just one thing they just feel like they can't do anymore. But I can get it, and now I understand what I didn't understand before, that they consider it our data, not their data. So I can, so I can get it from them and provide it to those requesting it.
But I guess the question is how soon, you would think since it's done on electronically online, that, you know, two weeks from today, it should be, or some, very soon after, it should be available.
I.
And if you wanted to get a voter list from that.
Yeah, I'll find out. I'm in touch with the person at the state who deals with this for us, and I will, I'll find out what's, what will happen. At this point, I mean, they don't, I still have the poll books, they don't even have our data yet, so they'll get that tomorrow and how, and typically, what they did last time is they do provide me, because the non-citizen list is in there, they provide that back to me. They will provide me my list of those voters directly. So I think they could do the other as well, but I'll find out.
Thank you.
And if I can just add one comment on that particular topic. It may be me, I won't claim it isn't, but the data that the county provided to you that was then available for a price to candidates was signally unhelpful this time because it appeared that it was only easy to keep it in its alpha sort, but you couldn't easily sort it by street. Because the house number and the street were in the same.
Combined, yes.
They were in the same.
That's.
Field.
That's.
And so I thought, well, okay, I'm going back to the old data.
I can get, I can request it in different formats. They can send it to me as a text file that I create the Excel file from. Somehow, things got a little mixed up this time. We had a lot of back and forth in getting the information, and the final list that I got was that Excel file. I didn't get the text file in that final format.
Yeah, I felt like I could start taking it back to a text file, but at that point in the election, I wasn't about to do that.
Right. So it wasn't ideal. I recognize that, yes.
Somebody else down here, Councilmember Siemens, and then Councilmember Wright, and then maybe we will finish.
Mine, real quick, I was just going to say, I know that when I saw the long line, it was, you felt like it was going to be hours before you got to the desk. It turned out not to be. So it might be helpful if we could post signs along the way saying, you know, "If you're at this point in line, it's probably only 10 minutes from here."
Like at Potbelly, if you're standing here, it's eight minutes before you.
That's right.
Councilmember Wright.
I only ask this question because I just got an email from a constituent about it. They were curious about whether the, because when they came up to hand in their ballot, the person wasn't quite sure which way to scan it, you know, whether it was, went face down or face up. And so the question was whether the things, does one-sided scan or two-sided scan?
The machine can read a scan up, either, facing either, if the paper's facing either way.
Either direction.
And forward or backwards.
Yeah.
They're decent scanners and they can do that.
Great.
Although the judge should have known. Maybe it was somebody who had just started doing that or something.
Yeah, I think, yeah, they, it was like, they thought it might have been a training issue, but it doesn't, it doesn't really matter if it's one, if it's this way or that way.
Yeah, it was red. If it was in there, it was red.
Great.
I have a quick follow-up on that one. When I brought mine up, I was putting it in there and it was face up, and I was told, "Oh, no, it has to be face down." So I turned it face down. And you could see the ballot from the other side, and I thought, well, that's not good. Maybe there should be some kind of a, some covering on the underside of the clear scan tray.
There's been a lot of discussion about that. The intent of the privacy screen is that you put your ballot inside and the whole thing slides into the scanner. There's an ingenious little button to keep the folder from sliding in, and then we fish that out.
I see. I think I might have been told that and I completely forgot about it between.
Mine worked really well.
Test, test. And not everybody used the privacy sleeves. Some people were, their general attitude was, this is just making it more complicated. And some people, we did ask people to put their ballot face down if we, I mean, I didn't argue with anybody about it, but different people have different visions of their job as a scanner.
Sure.
Staff person. And there, it's a point that we can work on. I think the future versions of this will have dark plexiglass that you can't see through, and that'll just take care of that problem.
So we've determined that people don't necessarily remember directions, people don't necessarily read directions.
Yep.
Or policy numbers.
And that's all represented up here.
One finding suggestion, which is.
That's the final one.
Okay. In many elections that I've voted in, including many in Tacoma Park, they would have sample, they'd have a space where you could mark up a sample ballot, or they'd have, you know, a machine that you could play on and so on. And I wondered if we shouldn't set one up that had, you know, ballots that people could see how it worked. And that would be a way of helping those folks who don't read the instructions to, you know. Did you see this separate little checking auditing thing?
I actually wanted that myself, and I'm thinking, this is, I'm thinking with my mouth right now, I'm thinking, it might be nice to have some ballots that are not part of our ballot series that have maybe the, your favorite animal election or something like that. And we can use the markers to show people. Because some people are not sure what the oval is supposed to look like when it's filled in, and it would have been, I took some, a spoiled ballot once to show, a couple times, I took a spoiled ballot to show people this is what it should look like when you filled it in. Because they, if they haven't done it before, especially people who, who believe that the technology's going to be difficult for them, whether it is or not, they're a little uncertain, uncomfortable, nervous about it, something like that. It would be nice to have a little card where you can just swipe and say, this is what it's supposed to look like. And I, it's on my list, so I'm glad we agree.
Okay, so.
I have a little bit more to say, actually.
Do that, and then I have a 30-second wrap-up and we'll be finished.
Okay. I wanted to also add that this project has been really a joint endeavor, even though we have a, I think it turned into a contract in the end with the Scan Integrity folks, but it's been a joint effort between us. And what we learned at the mock, really, is that we have the on-the-ground election expertise. Like, for instance, this would never happen without Jessie. I mean, there, I've, I've worked elections for a long time and I've been a chief judge for a while, and I know a lot about how to execute it, but Jessie has the history of Tacoma Park. And she, thanks, Jessie. It never would have happened without Jessie. But the Scan Integrity folks have a lot of people involved in different aspects of the process. They bring the election system expertise, we bring the election execution expertise. And it's been a really tremendous learning experience for everybody. Because there's, there's a big gulf between the people who do cryptography for a living and the people who do usability, would be a term for it. And there's, well, we can do this and this and this. And then we election judges think, I don't think so. And it's, it's been a great meeting ground for whether this is actually going to work. There are other voting systems out there that use cryptography, and this, this is the one that's been used in the municipal system, municipal election now. So we know it can work reasonably well, and that's, that's really cool. It's cool for us because we get it at almost no cost. We have, you know, we've paid for supplies and stuff, but they've designed and brought the lot and delivered the equipment, and they provide all the computer tech support, they do all the programming, and they were there for troubleshooting at the election, and they're doing some behavioral, I can't really call them behavioral studies. They have surveys of people after the election. You may have been invited to take a survey after the election, that's going on. And so we're part of this kind of a grand experiment in a way, but we, we are getting a lot from them that makes it possible for this to happen. So it's been very little cost to us, not free, but little cost to us because we have to buy supplies and so on. But it's been a nice, kind of symbiotic relationship there. And they've, in general, been great people to work with. And the, we have people to thank on the Board of Elections for identifying this system when we wanted to move to something more advanced. And the people, those of us who have been hanging in there on the Board of Elections, we've lost a lot of staff, but we have a dedicated corps now. And it's, it's been, it's been a cool process. And now I feel like, it's done, well, it's almost done. And it was a success, though, and I'm really glad for that.
Good.
And maybe our communications department could leverage some of this to get some publicity for Tacoma Park.
And thank you, and thank, everybody has helped. I think there's one person who's here with you who was.
Yes.
Part of the process, and if.
Jane Johnson is one of the assistant chiefs, and she's a current Board of Elections member.
And thank you as well.
Thank you, Jane.
And thank you for dealing with all of the various processes to get this, get us this far.